Good evening. Please silence your cell phones and be advised these proceedings are being recorded. For those physically present in the council chamber who desire to address the city council during the meeting, please complete a request to speak forum. They are available at the front entrance, and if you would, please present it to our city clerk. Speakers physically present and those participating via Zoom will be called upon at the appropriate time. Each person will be allowed three minutes speaking time. I will convene the regular city, the regular meeting of the city council for Tuesday, September 13th, 2022, for the City of Grand Terrace. Tonight, our invocation will be given by Pastor Edgy Gallegos of Living Word Inland Empire, and our pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilmember Sylvia Robles. If you would, please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Lord, we just come before you today, Father, and we thank you for everything that you're doing here in the City of Grand Terrace, Father God. We just pray for all the officials and all the civil servants, God. We thank you for their service and we thank you for what they're doing. We pray the wisdom of God upon them, the guidance and strength to make hard choices, Father God, that will better our community, Father. And we pray the strength upon them and promise our community, Father, the peace and strength upon it, Father. We thank you for what you're doing today, Father, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance is through the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with ever being just as for all.
Thank you, Pastor Edgy. Thank you, Councilmember Robles. Madam City Clerk, may we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Allen?
Present.
Councilmember Wilson?
I'm here.
Councilmember Robles?
I'm here, and I just want to mention my grandma was a Gallegos from Durango.
Mayor Protem Hussey?
Here.
Mayor Mcnevo?
Here.
Madam Mayor, you have a forum.
Thank you. Do we have any reordering of additions to or removal of items from the agenda?
Madam Mayor, we'd like to remove item number 11, please.
Thank you. So our first order of business today is a special presentation. So we will be having a presentation for the Hispanic Heritage Month. We have a proclamation. I'm here to say a few words about Hispanic Heritage Month. And accept the proclamation is Pastor Edgy Gallegos of Living Word Inland Empire. So please come back up to the lectern.
I just want to thank the mayor and the city officials of Grand Terrace for the opportunity to be here today on National Hispanic Heritage Month, and also with friends and family from our faith-based organizations, and so grateful for Living Word here with us today. Amen. And also Pastor Dale, all the way from Riverside, amen, from outreach, amen, grateful for them. But today, I want to talk about a few things if I can. On National Hispanic Heritage Month, we're here to celebrate our history, our culture, and our contribution of our Hispanic ancestors, who come from places like Mexico, Spain, South America, and many other countries. I will be here all day naming them all, but for the sake of time, I'll move on. Here's a little history on Hispanic Heritage Month. It began by 1968, Hispanic Heritage Week by President Johnson, then was expanded by President Ronald Reagan in 1988, from a week to a month. And it went from September 15 to October 15. And people always ask why the middle of a month? Because we like to start things late, and we like to finish early, which is the middle of October. But the reality is that September 16 and through these dates, Mexico and Chile celebrate independence and also others liberated from different struggles they had in the Hispanic, Mexican, and Latin culture. But since September 14, 1989, all presidents have given a presentation, proclamation, to mark Hispanic Heritage Month. And so we're grateful for that and grateful for our nation for taking consideration our heritage. When I say this, it's not to create segregation, but just to celebrate what God has done within our lives and within our culture. Amen? Today, I want to bring out some great men who have throughout the Hispanic culture done great things, but there's also some unsung heroes that are out there in the Hispanic culture. Men like Pastor Ruben Reyna, who at the age of seven was picking cotton in the fields of Texas. He decided to run to East LA when he was a teen man, teenager, who became addicted to drugs, lived a crazy life, and at the age of 20, he became tired of his life and his lifestyle, that he cleaned up his act, restored his marriage, and went to Latin Bible college, graduated from a school where he did not know Spanish. He had learned, he knew Spanish. He was the Chicano generation, which a lot of people don't understand heritage is, is the Chicano generation does not really know Spanish. They're not wanted by the Spanish and not wanted by the English. So we're stuck in the middle, baby, but we make it happen. And so here he is, he's, he began Latin Bible college, graduated, became a pastor, planted over 300 churches that would continue to affect our community today by helping thousands of men like me. My father, Ezekiel Gallegos Sr., was an immigrant from Mexico, who married my mother, Arlo Ramirez, who was from Bradley, California. We grew up a very poor, dysfunctional family, where my father would end up leaving me at the age of five, and my mother would have to work the grape fields while raising eight kids by a single mother to feed us all. Because of her lack of education, she would only work the fields. I would end up running the streets, getting involved in gangs and drugs that would end up sentencing me or being sent in the cell looking at 16 years to life. When I would remember a friend who told me about God and how God can help me, I cried out to the Lord, and he heard my cry. Then he placed Pastor Ruben Reyna in my life in 1993, who would be a role model and mentor, a father figure. This is my point of Hispanic Heritage Month. There's a power that's connected from the church to the community, from the community to our civil servants. A church in the community reaches individuals like me, lost with no direction, seamless, hopeless, with no future, who is now doing the same thing in the City of Grand Terrace, reaching the lost at any cost. I want to inspire our community and our city servants not to be afraid of each other, but to trust each other. We need to find a bridge, a common ground, so we can thrive in unity as a community, as civil servants, and a local church. There is a need for an active church in our community, but so many things happening, we can't disvalue the value of the church. We bring hope and a lighthouse to our community by housing the homeless, drug addicts, spouse abuse, sex traffickers, sex abuse teens. Those are a few that the Hispanic churches feel that what is this Hispanic church is doing in our community. You can see some of them here with us today. And I know this is much more, and there is much more for us as a community, as civil servants, and as a Hispanic church. This is one thing that got me this morning when I was sitting here, and I know it's important for us to understand. We cannot disvalue our community because our community has done so much, and we can't disvalue our civil servants because our civil servants has done so much, have to make hard choices in hard times. And I'm saying this tonight just for you can understand that a young Hispanic boy seemed hopeless, without worth, no one to guide him and lead him until I met a man who was transferred by God, who became a loud voice for the community of East LA. So I tell you today, let us rise up together, find common ground, and work together so we can build a bridge to change our community. We thank you, and we love you, and we support our city.
Thank you so much for the inspiration and the rich history. Now to formally proclaim, City of Grand Terrace proclamation, National Hispanic Heritage Month. Whereas National Hispanic Heritage Month is celebrated nationwide from September 15 through October 15 each year, the observation started in 1968 as Hispanic Heritage Week, and it was expanded by President Ronald Reagan in 1988 to cover the month in which it is celebrated today. Understanding that September 15 is significant because it is the anniversary of independence for Latin America, excuse me, Latin American countries, Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua. In addition, Mexico and Chile celebrate their independence days on September 16 and 18, respectively. And whereas Latinos are individuals that are descendants from Latin American countries and may speak a variety of different languages, Hispanics are individuals that speak Spanish and are descendants of Spanish-speaking countries, including Spain. And whereas recognizing that Hispanics amount to an estimated 6,000 residents totaling 49.4% of the City of Grand Terrace population, understanding that Hispanics are extremely entrepreneurial and play a vital role in our economy and workforce. And whereas the City of Grand Terrace recognizes the significant contributions of all Hispanic residents, business professionals, city employees, and numerous grassroots leaders and outreach groups that help increase cultural awareness, education, enrichment, and community engagement with our residents. It is through their support and community involvement that our city has continued to become more and culturally diverse and a welcoming city for everyone. And whereas the City of Grand Terrace is committed to recognizing Hispanic, Latino, and Latinx culture and heritage as an important part of the city and its strong inclusive community. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Darcy Mcnevo, Mayor of the City of Grand Terrace, along with my fellow council members, proclaim September 15 through October 15, 2022, as National Hispanic Heritage Month and call its observance to all residents presented this 13th day of September, 2022. And if you would, please, Pastor, come and join us. We have this beautiful plaque to give to you. We're going to go over here. And we also have this nice lapel pin that is in the shape of a key with the city logo. Returning to our agenda, we have consent calendar. The consent calendar items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the city council at one time without discussion. Any council member, staff member, citizen may request removal of an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Are there any requests to have items removed from the consent calendar? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for the consent calendar.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Robles, second by Councilmember Allen. If you would, please, we'll vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
So we have public comment at this time? Do we have a request to speak during public comment?
No, Madam Mayor.
Okay. So this was an opportunity for people to speak on items not on the agenda. There will be further opportunities to speak for items on the agenda. So I'm going to close this public comment and say we have no public hearings tonight, but we do have a little bit of unfinished business. Item number nine on our agenda is to adopt the resolution authorizing participation in the PARs, which is Post Employee Benefits Trust Program administered by Public Agency Retirement Services and the U.S. Bank, appointing the city manager as the city's plan administrator and authorizing city clerk to execute the documents and to implement the program. And so tonight, we have Teri Shea, who's our interim finance director, to present this item. Mr. Shea?
Oh, sorry, it's already on. Your Honorable Mayor, Member of City Council, I'm glad to be here. Usually don't have this big audience, but thanks for staying. Just kind of hoping they'd leave. So what you have before you is back in June, we had met and talked about funding strategies for our long-term obligations. And two of our long-term obligations, the first one is our pension liability. And so if you turn to the first page in, so we have three plans. We have the miscellaneous plan, the Pepper Plan, and the second tier plan. Our unfunded accrued liability at June 30, 2020 for the miscellaneous plan was 5.5, and the Pepper Plan was 56,000, and then the second tier plan, which is a closed plan, which is 54,000. We're about 68% funded on the one, 89% funded on the other, and 91%. And so the one we're most concerned about is the miscellaneous plan. So we turn to the next page, you can see our normal cost is what we pay based on our monthly payroll, and that is more than, these numbers are kind of backwards, but anyways. So that is 87,000 a year, and then we have what's to make up that unfunded portion, that amount is just under 600,000, and that's the part that we're trying to fund and get that paid down quickly. The normal costs are based on our payroll, and those are pretty easy to cover. Most of our employees now are in the Pepper Plan, which we all know what that is, which is good. So if you turn to the next page, reasons to pre-fund, one, we can get a greater, a greater expected rate of return, the discount rates, which lowers our liabilities, investment flexibility with a Section 115 trust compared to general restrictions on our governmental funds. Contributions in the trust are assets that offset the liabilities on our financial statements because you will have seen from about five, six years ago, they put our pension liability on the books, can help with our city's credit ratings if we ever want to issue debt. And the only downside it has is just like market fluctuation because the market goes up and down. At its meeting at June 14, 22, council indicated they would like to further explore the use of a Section 115 trust to address the city's unfunded liabilities. In compliance with this direction, staff contacted four providers that, from qualified vendors for IRS Section 115 trusts. We reviewed, compared, and evaluated each proposal. In total, the city received three responses to the request for the information, one from CalPERS, one from Keenan, and one from PARs. The fourth provider, PFM, declined to respond, stating that we didn't have enough money for them. So we were just like, fine, we don't want you. Finance staff found all three firms to be professionally qualified to provide trust services, but staff were unanimous in recommending PARs, providing the trust services based on the qualifications, experience, staff knowledge, I've worked with them in several cities, cost, and ease of the administrative process. PARs has the most IRS Section 115 pension trusts under management, managing over 420 separate trusts, and PARs provided a strong and knowledgeable working group for the city. Basically, we're looking, the reason we're doing this is so we can find alternative ways to increase our funded ratio and basically lower it. And PERS is going to do something this next year, they're lowering the discount rate from 7% to 6.8%, which is going to raise our liability. And then they're shortening the amortization period from 30 years down to 20 years, which then lowers or raises that liability, and we have to pay more each year. By funding the 115 trusts instead of sending money to CalPERS, this will allow greater control of our assets, investments by a professional fund management team selected and monitored by the city, with future excess contributions transferred to PERS, to CalPERS at the city's discretion. And what we would use this money to earn is help pay down that unfunded liability each year, which would then free up more of the general fund for other items. Briefly, what a Section 115 trust is, cities can establish an IRS Section 115 trust. These are irrevocable and must be used for pension or OPEB obligations. A couple of companies that provide the Section 115 trusts, one of those bid, which is PARs, they received an IRS private letter ruling, which means it's in compliance with IRS rules. Any questions so far? So the expected benefits offered by the PARs plan are contributions placed in an exclusive benefit trust that could address the city's pension liability, investment flexibility, increased risk diversification of planned assets, investments can be tailored to the city's unique demographics, oversight and control of fund management selection, monitoring of performance and ability to replace fund management based on performance, increased flexibility in the use of the trust. Trust assets can be accessed at any time, as long as the assets are used to fund the city's pension obligations. So in case we ever have a downturn or something, that money is there available if we need it. Potential for positive rating agency and investor consideration. The PARs program has been set up as a multiple employer trust so that public agencies, regardless of size, can join the program to receive the necessary economies of scale and to help keep the fees and avoid any setup costs. The trust permits the city under federal and state law to invest in a more diversified array of investments to maximize investment returns long term. Partners with U.S. Bank, they're the custodial bank, and then Highmark Capital does the management of the funds and the investing. And possible funding obligations are, one, pension obligation bonds, one-time revenue sources such as proceeds from the sale of property, lower the minimum general fund reserve level percentage that we set with our GASB 54 adjustment, contribute a certain percentage of any given year's realized general fund surplus, or an annual appropriation in each year's budget. Staff is recommending using a portion of the proceeds from the sale of the fire station for the initial funding. So what, basically at this point, just open for questions, so.
As far as the proceeds from the sale, or a portion of the proceeds from the sale, what recommended portion are you suggesting?
I think in discussion with the city manager, we would like to use 1 million from the proceeds to start.
Isn't that all of it? And isn't it 3.5 million? Oh, really?
Just a portion. What's the final sales price, like 1.4?
Oh, it was 1.4? Okay.
Yeah.
I had that inflated in my mind.
It was a good one.
I wish it wasn't.
All right. And so is that enough to make something worthwhile?
Definitely. Because we could, right now, their last year, I think they paid around 8% return. And so we would let this grow for four, five, six years and build it up, and then at that point, start using it to offset the UAL.
Okay. So we wouldn't make any payments out of it?
Not for a few years.
In the near term?
Yeah, until it grows, yeah.
And we would still have the ability to pay what we need to pay in the interim?
Yes. And if there is a downturn, that money could be pulled back out and used to cover the UAL in case there's another recession or a downturn or a budget gap, so.
Okay. Further questions? Councilmember Wilson?
How much are we considering? Oops. How much are we considering taking from the fire station?
Oh, I think on this, for this, for the pension would be $1 million.
Okay. It leaves us with 300 at the end or something?
Yeah, it was 1.3 million, so.
Yeah, that's kind of stiff. Wow. Okay. Well, I should be happy with that.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you.
Teri, I asked last time if you knew how much money came out when we sold the childcare was used for the same thing. Did you look it up? Or do you remember?
Forgot, sorry. I will do that, so.
Because it seemed like every time we sell something here, we're using that money for the fund, so.
Was that money paid directly to CalPERS, maybe? Okay.
City manager was shaking his head, yes.
That's another option, bud.
Affirmative, it was paid directly to CalPERS and then went into that fund, which is a different structure than we're proposing here.
Okay.
All right. That's all. Thank you.
Councilmember Allen, did you have your hand up? No? Okay. Councilmember Robles?
No, I'm ready to deliver.
All right.
When they get to there.
No more questions at this time.
All right. So then what we're just recommending, the city council adopt the resolution authorizing participation in the PARs Post Employment Benefits Trust Program administered by the Public Agency Retirement Services and U.S. Bank, and appointing the city manager as the city's plan administrator and authorizing the city clerk to execute the documents and implement the program, so.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. Oh, we have a question from Councilmember Allen.
Only because of what he just read. Under the recommendation, it says to make an initial investment of 100,000. He's talking about a million?
That's for the OPEB plan. This is the pension one.
Oh, okay. Oops, I was reading the item 10.
Yeah.
Okay. So is the 1 million amount in the resolution?
We had recommended that, but I don't think it's in there.
Does it need to be in it?
It is not in the resolution, so we would bring, we're not going to spend any money we don't have, so we can open this, and once we have money from the fire station, then we can spend the money we have. We're not going to get ahead of ourselves on this.
Because you can open it without funding it right away, so.
Oh.
Well, I have-
Councilmember Robles?
Yeah, I have some concerns before we vote on anything.
Okay. Did you want questions of staff, or do you want to address those concerns with council members during deliberation?
During deliberation.
Okay. All right. Mr. Shea, thank you so much. Do we all open public comment? Do we have any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, we'll close public comment, and I will come back to Councilmember Robles. Please share your concerns.
Yeah, my concern is, kind of, I'm glad that Councilman Hussey brought it up. The childcare center, we paid it off, and it was to go to pay off the debt that we had for childcare employees. And then I guess if there was a residual amount, it was going to go to general employees. Well, I still haven't seen a report on what the effect of that was, and then we have another asset, and we're going again, and we're doing it to save money for the general fund for services, but this is my rub. We've already spent $1 million from the childcare center, and this is a hungry vulture, this pension issue, and now we're going to throw more money at it, and it just leaves us about And then we have potentially another recession, and we don't know how that's going to affect us, if we're going to have any hits to our property tax revenue or anything like that. So I'm just concerned about, and finally, I think a lot of people know, we couldn't document whether we had paid off the civic center, so we essentially paid it off again. So that was like a million dollars. So, and I think that money went to, some of that savings also went to defray some of the cost of pension. So I guess what I'm looking for is an overall report of what we've done before we commit to a precise amount for this.
Yeah, I agree that that is needed. When we come back and determine how much money would go into the funds, I would like to see the same things that Councilmember Robles is asking about, but also, again, a schedule for what we're looking at as far as payoff. You know, and I know that there was a projection done, and I'd like to see that. I understand you can only project so much earnings with the investment, but I would like to at least have a view into that. Further comments from my colleagues? Councilmember Wilson?
I'm trying to do the figures in my head, and I'm thinking- I'm trying to do the figures in my head, and I'm thinking that before, we had a unfunded pension liability of $5 million, almost $6 million, and we've been basically paying interest off on it. This is a one-time chunk that we've got from this school, or not the school, but the-
Fire.
Fire department. What happens after that? How do we keep funding, because I know there's going to have to be contributions past this, and just because we put a million dollars on the principal doesn't mean that we're accomplishing our goal. We don't want to keep, you know, end up with a stagnant situation where we end up still paying interest, and it just keeps building up anyway. So, you know, assage my concerns, if you can.
So, whatever amount, whatever amount we put in this is assigned to offset our PERS liability. It's essentially an investment account, so whatever profit comes out of that gets paid against PERS. If there's a downturn, then we can use those funds to pay our PERS obligation in whatever year. We can't use it to do something else, but we can use it, and then that would free money in the general fund. So we're essentially banking this. As far as a year-over-year, there's no obligation that we add money year-over-year to this. We need to continue to pay our PERS bill, but this particular, consider it a savings account, an interest-bearing savings account, that as we have money, and should, I'm hoping that we have budget surplus year-over-year, that those surpluses we can put in there against this as well. We treat one-time money as one-time expense and not as a recurring thing. So, you know, we got a lottery check, let's put it in savings, let's not go out and blow it. And this is essentially a savings account for future expenses.
So we will continue to, our plan then would be to continue to, so, oh, I got it. So we've got a safety net, and we can use it for that, but only that. And if it, if for some reason, we need to use it, it's there. In addition to that, we're going to continue to do the game plan that we've got so far as normal payments. How did it, how did it get up to $5.5, $6 million if we were diligent on doing what we were doing?
Year-over-year, PERS has, and that's one reason that we're not recommending writing a check to PERS, that we manage our own money, makes, has expectations that they fail to meet.
Yeah, that's for sure.
Their performance is not always what they aim for in the year, and when that performance falls short, then that's an unfunded liability that we have to fill that gap.
So, in essence, at the end of the year, when they don't make their projections, they hand you a bill? Basically.
Anything they fall short on, then, becomes an unfunded-
Liability.
Yeah, they look to the cities and say, okay, your portion just got bigger.
Interesting system.
Councilmember Robles?
Thank you.
Yeah, but again, because I'd like to see what the net gain was of spending to childcare money. We went through with our last city manager, and Cynthia Fortune Finance, and we're really, I think, pretty up to par. We fully understand that when they reduce the rate, doesn't mean that they're going to meet their targets. So, you know, the bill comes, so I think it's, for our custodial responsibility, I think it's important for us to see the full picture of what we've tried to do in the past, because one of the things about government is, yes, you know, you do have staff that carries out the needs of the communities, but I'm kind of concerned about, is there some other needs that maybe the community needs that should be funded, and we're aggressively focused on one area? And I think we need to consider that.
All right, further comments? Mayor Protem?
Yes, I agree with Councilmember Robles, and that's the thing is, because when we sold the childcare people, like, what'd you do with the money? Or selling the fire department, what were you doing with the money? And we understand, I mean, this has been, I don't know how many legal cities have been to the FERS and CalPERS and all of that, and then, like I said, I go, I wish I could invest in it, they're going to guarantee me 7%. You know, I just, it's just crazy how they make this happen, and how they'll come back on the cities to fund a liability, but there's more numbers, see exactly where the money's going, like Councilmember Robles said, and that's what I like to see, too. And I understand, this is, we're breaking off, and this is a savings account that we're using for this, is that right? And we're paying, the interest is going to pay towards this, is this what?
That is correct.
Okay. So it's going into savings, and we're using the interest drawn on the million dollars to help pay this down?
Correct.
Councilmember Allen?
All right, thank you.
So I know that probably, you can't give me like a to-the-dollar figure, but it seems with the presentation that Mr. Shea gave, and with the papers we have here, that, you know, it's almost like, why wouldn't you? Why wouldn't everybody do this? So, what's the, what's, is there a risk that we're not hearing about, or is there a greater risk? Is there, and also, is there a way for that we could know, if you do this plan, you'll save this much, if you don't do this plan, it's going to cost you this much more? And a pretty close amount.
So, as the downside, this is, the downside would be is that it does not generate, like PERS, the amount of return that we expect. We would still have the money in savings, yet we would not get the additional revenue that we're looking for.
Is it any riskier than PERS?
No.
Okay.
And it's not, you know, the risk with, and we're, it's under our control. With PERS, we can write them a check for arguably a million dollars. This goes down to $4.5 million, and they fail to meet their amount, and next year it's back up to some other number. So at least this way, we have control of what that amount is, that we have in our hands.
Well, that's a good thing, yeah. Okay, so, that's all. Thanks, Mayor.
Councilmember Robles?
I think it's important for us to know, and for this community to know, I know some cities have done ratios of how much the, of the property tax is going towards PERS. And some are saying like 68% of each tax dollar is going to PERS. So I think it's important for us to know. I mean, because that's a policy discussion that we need to have with Sacramento. It's almost like student loans. What if we paid this off, and then they decide to, like, student loans?
Forgive me?
They're going to forgive it.
Which is why we don't want to pay it all off at one time.
Yeah, I mean, because it's all fiat money anyways, it's just, oh.
Which is why we want to hold on to it, not give it to them, yes.
And so if we hold on to this in our savings, and we decide not to pay down the debt, because of the scenario you're painting, we can still use that money to pay our regular annual obligation. And so we're not tying up the money and having to give it to them for something that, you know, somebody might come along and forgive all that debt, and so then we could just use it as our way of paying our annual allotment. Councilmember Wilson?
Do any of us know what the differential is, then? I mean, if we were going to save it and stick it in a CD, so to speak, versus what we'd get in this trust, considering it's non-revocable, I mean, there's got to be a payoff here someplace. So I'm assuming that there's a differential in the interest?
Three to 4%. Three to 4%.
That's the differential.
Yes.
Three to 4%. Okay. So that's what you get, if put in a revocable trust. But you lose control, other than putting it against the-
Right, it would be us making the decision that a portion of this money, we want to put towards retirement benefits in some regards, either the unfunded liability, or in large chunks, or our annual allotment that we have to pay. So we would be making that commitment, that that's what we're using that money for, we're just not doing it all at once. Further discussion? Councilmember Robles?
Mayor, you make me think of another issue, is like, what are the management costs for paying? Whereas, we just had this, you know, aside, and we had a policy to use that money as years went forward.
Are the management costs covered in the interest we expect to earn? I mean, I did see your percentages.
Yeah, there's no setup fee, and then the charges are taken directly out of the trust, so, the annual charges.
So will, how much will that erode our principal amount, though?
Depends on the principal amount, and then, I think it was six basis points, is that what it was, or 10? I forget. But yeah, so they come directly out of there, and there's no management fee, per se, it's just, there is a fee, but it comes out of the trust itself.
And they should, and there should be enough interest earned on the investment-
Definitely, yes.
That that will come out of the interest earned?
It'll more than cover it.
Well, I'm just concerned that you win the lottery, instead of blowing it, you go to a casino.
Try to make, try to make more, try to double it. I think this is a little bit, I think this is a little bit more conservative than that. Just a little bit more conservative. All right, any further discussion? Do we want to make a decision on this, or do we want to have staff come back to us with more information?
You could set the trust up, but not fund it just yet, and then we could come back with options and the childcare stuff and-
And if we set it up and decide that we changed our mind?
They don't care, they just cancel the plan, so.
Okay.
And you could even fund it with a dollar if you wanted to, or something, so.
All right.
Doesn't hurt to set it up, since they're not going to charge us to set it up, so.
All right. How would we like to move forward on this? Is there a motion at all for what we want to do with this item?
Well, Mayor?
Councilmember Allen?
Maybe we should go ahead and get the program set up unfunded, you know, so that we can have it available, too, so we can make the decision.
All right, so you are making a motion for staff recommendation?
That's correct.
All right, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so a motion by Councilmember Allen, second by Mayor Protem Hussey, and this is to set up the trust program unfunded at this time.
Okay, and I will get some samples from some cities that I know that have used it, and what they put in, and where they're at now, and how they average, so you guys have a little more information when you go to decide how to fund it, so.
All right, thank you. Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, just for the record, Mayor, I just wanted to reference that there is an agreement for administrative services that is attached to the resolution, and so by adopting the resolution, you're authorizing staff to execute that agreement. So I just want to note that for the record.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I want to offer a substitute motion.
Okay.
The substitute motion is to have staff wait on this until they come back with us with more information that we've asked for.
Is there a second for the substitute? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and, but thank you for, thank you for offering that. And we will vote on our original motion. Please vote at this time.
Motion passes with Councilmember Robles voting no.
All right, thank you. All right, so we will move to item 10 of our unfinished business, which is unfunded OPEB liability. And Mr. Shea, you are up once again.
Your Honorable Mayor, City Council, it's kind of came from the same council meeting, where we decided to explore options. We, the same four companies that I contacted last time also do this. The expert in this right now is through CalPERS, called their CERT program, and so after interviewing and talking with the people, I'm looking at the number of programs that CalPERS has in their CERT program, and having dealt with them in other cities, for the city of Rolling Hills, we started it in 2011, and when we got to 2018, we had doubled our money in those seven years. So we went from $300,000 to over $600,000, and completely funded our liability, and we used that to pay down. And so, but basically, they have a very good program, and they have three levels of risk. They have a high, medium, and a low, and, you know, the cities, most cities take the middle level, and so, basically, everything is the same, except for this one, we're recommending, starting with $100,000 from the proceeds of the sale, and joining the CERT program through CalPERS. And our annual liability is about $35,000 right now for retiree healthcare, that's what we budget each year. And so this money, if it doubles like that, we would be able to cover that every year, and we'd all be able to cover that budget, which would then free up another $30,000, maybe, for additional sharps or something else, or one hour of a sheriff, so anyways. But another reason to do this program is, through the CERT program, they work directly with our actuary, and this asset will then lower that liability on our financial statements. And by going with the CERT program, it'll have like a 6% or 7% discount rate, whereas right now, we're using a 2.2 rate, because we're a pay-as-you-go, and so that will lower our liability by about two-thirds of our liability, that'll bring that liability down quite a bit. And so we're recommending that we go with the CERT program for those reasons.
Thank you. Questions of staff at this time? Councilmember Allen?
I noticed on the page that's, let's see, it'd be one, I'd like, page four. Actually, my question is going to be, what's the difference in this trust and what we were just talking about with item nine, and are these, can-
They're all similar. PERS is like the expert for the pension, and CalPERS started this CERT program long before anybody else did, and they're considered like the top one, and their rate of return has been remarkable in cities-
But this can be used for what we just voted on, previous item? Something like this? CalPERS doesn't have a 115 trust for that?
CalPERS started a pension 115 plan last year, and that's one thing that I got information on.
Right.
But they only have like about 24 cities in it now, that's just starting, so that's why we recommended PERS. But for this CERT program, for the OPEB liability, they're considered probably the top one, so.
Thank you.
But this couldn't work for the pension, but CalPERS has a similar program, so.
Although they're related, one, the one we discussed earlier is for retirement pensions, this is for healthcare benefits and other benefits related to that, so they're similar, but for different funds and different funding sources.
So it's only because of the lack of time CalPERS has had that, the one we voted on earlier, that they just haven't had the experience in it? Is that the reason you recommended the other one?
Right, they've only had the plan for like a year and a half now.
Yeah.
Don't have that many cities in it yet, so.
Yeah, all right. Because I guess it says y'all were really unanimous in recommending them, CalPERS for this, what we're talking about now.
It's a very well-run program, which you-
Yeah, and I can see why.
There's forms you fill out each year, and they work with your actuary, and so it's one of the top programs that I've dealt with over the last 10, 12 years, so.
Further questions? All right. Any requests to speak on this item?
No, Madam Mayor.
All right, we'll close public comment and bring it back to council for deliberation and consideration of a motion.
Mayor?
Councilmember Allen?
I will make a motion to approve staff recommendations for the purpose of discussion.
All right, thank you.
Second.
All right, motion by Councilmember Allen, second by Councilmember Wilson, and further discussion on this item?
I will.
Councilmember Allen.
I just want to confirm in my own mind that what we're voting on, what you're asking us to consider here, the recommendation is that this is another item that's going to save us money.
Yes, sir.
Correct?
Yes.
So.
It's similar to the other one.
Right.
That the money is there just for the OPEB.
Yeah.
And so what you usually would do after a couple of years of earning money, at the end of the year, we would submit all the 36, 37, whatever it is, to the program and then they would reimburse us.
Yeah.
And so we would budget this money, the earnings on this fund, to cover our retired employee healthcare costs each year, so. Right now, it's not a lot, but it, you know, it's going to get more and more, so it's a little over, what, $36,000, $37,000 a year?
Is it, but why are you asking for $100,000 if it's only?
Just a good start to get it to build up.
Okay.
And so what that would do then is instead of taking that $100,000 and putting it towards this program for a year and then more the next year, it actually would be something that would pay our obligation hopefully in perpetuity?
Yes, ma'am, that's the thought, so.
So in perpetuity, it frees up the.
The money from the general.
The cost that we would be spending out of the general fund on that.
Yes.
Mayor?
Councilmember Allen.
Is it also, is this also irrevocable, like the other one was?
They're both, yeah, it's irrevocable.
But then we could spend it out if we wanted to, right?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And could we put this towards pension funding?
Not, not from the SERP program.
Okay.
But, yeah.
Mayor Protem.
So you said average is about $37,000, you're asking for $100,000. This is initial funding, so we'd be needing to fund that later on, say the four-year mark, or?
Now, the plan here is also to let it grow for a few years and keep the $100,000 in there and when it builds up, and so we earn enough interest each year to cover our costs, and then the principal will grow and eventually we'll, we'll be making more in interest than we're spending each year and then the plan will grow.
And you're recommending to be in the middle risk, the mid-risk program?
Yeah, but we could come back to you with that too if you would like, but they have option one, two, and three, and option two is a little bit less risky than one. One is, and how they do it is the mix of like bonds and, you know, equities, that's the risk.
Are they worried about the risk with the looming recession, or?
Well, I mean, this is another program we could probably open and fund with just a little bit and see how it goes. But there are some months where you don't open the envelope and you don't sell, right? So you hope it comes back and, you know, there are months where you lose money and then there's.
Yeah, it went down 4% today, so.
It's a long-term proposition.
Yeah, it's a very long.
It's not a day trading thing.
Yeah, no day trading, long-term.
And what's the difference between the midterm and the low risk?
It's the mix of the equities and the bonds, and we can bring that back to if you would like, and the council could make the decision as to which.
Yeah, I'd like to see the difference in the interest on both, percentage.
We'll bring that back then.
All right, thank you.
Further discussion? Councilmember Robles.
Yeah, I just want to say, the Mayor Protem's points are well because I was looking at some graphs that was in the budget and I felt the mix was a little bit aggressive. I don't have a lot of good things to say with my 401K, 457 experience, you know, where you, with Enron, they're supposed to have due diligence, with the computer fiasco, there's supposed to be due diligence and the prospectuses and all that stuff. And we end up every 10 years with some kind of fiasco, and I'm not having a good feeling about where we're at right now. So that's all I have to offer.
Okay. Further conversation?
The investment strategies are in your packet, and they start at page 153. So you can see SERP Strategy 1, you know, and it gives you the mix of global equity, fixed income, treasuries. And then on SERP Strategy 2, it has a little bit less in global equity and fixed income. And then on SERP Strategy 3, very little in global equity. And so you can see kind of the mix and how they, a little less risk. And so those are from page 153 to 158 in your packet there.
And it's showing over a 10-year period as well. All right, further discussion? All right, so we have a motion on the table for staff recommendation in a second. Let's vote at this time.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Shea. All right. Our one item of new business has been removed, and so we have no request for future agenda items either. And so City Council Communications, beginning with Councilmember Jeff Allen.
Thanks, Mayor. I attended the CalCities convention in Long Beach this past week. And, you know, there's a couple of hot-button items that they were, seemed to emphasize in several different sessions while we were there. And of course, because I'm on the San Bernardino County Solid Waste Advisory Task Course, one of those hot-button items is SB 1383 and all about it. So I attended those sessions, and just real quickly, there's a, CalRecycle was there and talking about how there's a lot of grant funding available to implement 1383, but you have to sign up on grant lists or. Now, the most interesting thing that I think I found out about this entire thing that Sacramento's making us do with our waste, they have determined that they're going to use all the wastewater treatment facilities in the state as anaerobic digesters. So they're going to start trucking our biologics to the wastewater treatment facilities, they'll grind it there, inject it into the treatment water, and let it get treated. And in fact, what they've learned from doing this is that the end product is better now, doing this than not doing it. In other words, the water that comes out the end is cleaner doing it this way than not adding our biologics from our waste. So, yeah, that's how they're going, that's how they're going to meet the demand statewide to handle all of this biological waste, you know, that we have to put in our cans now. The Edible Food Recovery Program, there's a nonprofit umbrella organization, national organization called Feeding America that's going to help in establishing this food recovery program, but it's actually not quite as complicated as it seems because there's already some programs in place in Orange County. Orange Coast College has established a food recovery program with solar-powered freezers and portable kitchens. And so the city of Irvine and Santa Ana and all those areas are showing how this food recovery program can be implemented and the food can be put back into the system and made available for those in need. And that's the whole purpose of the edible food recovery program. CalRecycle has SB 619 to help them with enforcement, which they will begin doing, but she did say that they are going to be very, very understanding when it comes to enforcement because they do understand that this is not an easy thing to do. But now that they've determined that these wastewater treatment plants are the ticket for resolving this issue with anaerobic digesters, they, but they recommended using the League's resources and CalRecycle's resources and for cities to understand that your biggest challenges are going to be in procurement and sustainability of the program, are going to be in multifamily dwelling collections, and also with commercial retail or special events are going to be real challenges for you, for us. Yeah, so that was, but also, you know, I've been, in my discussions with some people, I'm a big promoter of anaerobic digesters, but I just want people to also know that mulch and compost is an essential part of California's effort to conserve water and to, and to fight pollution. That mulch will retain 80% of the water that's put on it, it just soaks it up and it helps the ground and your plants stay moist. So mulching and composting are as essential also we learned as the anaerobic digesters. It's all one operation that's going to help the state get, move forward in handling its, you know, waste problem. And then I also, one of the things I've, they have the, you know, the big marketing hall and all these vendors come there. And you've seen them all, but I saw one that I thought was really, really unique, and this operation is in Orange County, Santa Ana, and this is the only state-licensed home recycling business there is. They will pick up your CRVs at your home and pay you for them there at the prevailing rate. And, yeah, it's a, I thought, wow, that's a really interesting program whose time is long overdue. Think of all the people who don't want to go over to the recycle center by the high school. Now they can, they'll come to them and pay them the same rate. I thought that's a great, great thing to learn about right there. And the only other thing that I wanted to talk about real quick is, this is not something that I think that our city could get too heavily involved in, but they had the Capitals Policing Project, and I would strongly like to encourage anyone who's interested in the Capitals Policing Project, which uses community capitals. And what capitals is, that's with an A-L, not O-L. They're talking about the assets within the community and they build on those in their policing project. And the Alameda County Sheriff's Department was there with a presentation that they have, for the last 18 years, they've been operating a, three regenerative agriculture centers in their county. They have instituted years ago, started the circular food economy there. This is amazing what the Sheriff's Department did there. They have, they have two nonprofits that the Sheriff's Department owns and operates. And they have a health and fitness center and soccer clubs and boxing gyms and the football, and they have these urban farms that are regenerative agriculture, which is the highest government rating you can get for an organic farm. And they supply all the food for all the county services with it, and they provide trauma and job counseling and on-the-job training and education and all that for these people that are working there and covered in medical benefits. It's an amazing program. Yeah, so that was my, my most memorable experience, memorable experiences of the League thing. And the only other thing I want to mention is, I am so excited because I went to the first Grand Terrace New Chamber of Commerce meeting this morning at Woody's. I am so excited because there are people in this community that want to establish a strong and grow a strong and effective Chamber of Commerce, and I, I want you to know, I support that so much and I wish you all the best and I will give you all the support I can. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen. Councilmember Doug Wilson?
I too attended the League of Cities Conference. There were over 2,000 people there, and it's amazing how they feed that monster crowd. We, Jeff and I kept walking to the end of the, end of the line. At a point, we thought maybe it was going to stretch out to pass the conference area, and the food was not as good as what we got from the dinner from the attorneys, I can guarantee you. I attended some, a myriad of sessions, and one in particular was small business incubator, which I know in our area has been somewhat activated. What they did point out is the fact that if you're going, you're going to try to run a business on a small business loan, forget it. It's just not there. And so they were looking for people of the community to try to support those kinds of circumstances and/or businesses that, or businesses or people who like to place their money in something that they're not even 100% sure they're going to get the money back, but they know what the community benefit is. And I thought that was interesting to point that out because usually they don't, don't even look at that aspect. You know, we have pet businesses in our cities and counties and so on that we realize what kind of a benefit might be derived from them, and when we see them go because they go BK, we're all sad and wish we would have been able to figure out a way to help. In this case, they're trying to be proactive. I also attended a public works contract situation, and despite having a table that would keep me from hitting my head on it, I found it to be slow, unfortunately, because most of the stuff that was talked about is stuff that almost everybody else could understand, but it was put on by a bunch of attorneys and it didn't surprise me very much. Anyway, and then I did attend a few, a couple of legal seminars I won't go into about, but I had the most interesting conversation with a like representative from Capitola, and I guess that's up near San Francisco, and he informed me that he's really into the Jack Reacher novels. That started the conversation, and after that, it was really, you know, it was kind of thrilling. I mean, this fellow was a very smart guy and I really enjoyed talking to him, and we spent a good half an hour or better talking about business. And also, I attended some General Assembly things, and I will have you know that we did count our vote on two issues. There were some issues in relation to changes in the bylaws, and then there were some people that were going to be installed as the new people, and they got installed and the changes in the new bylaws got challenged, but ended up going through. And that was pretty much it. My feet are sore and my thighs and my, every part of my body there for the first day was, felt like somebody, I'd been in a car wreck, I was pretty sure, but, and that was even using the very nice shuttles that they had, even though some of the characters in our group felt like they had to walk. It was 100 degrees outside, anyway. But I'm really glad to be home and glad to have attended, and I think I received some additional flashes of brilliance. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wilson. Councilmember Sylvia Robles?
I also attended, and I second the body complaints. I had some really bad shoes on, never going to do that again. Again, my hips hurt and my knees, everything. So I, the regional luncheon, I found, I always liked listening to Randall Lewis from Lewis's Development because he's very succinct. He said, "The housing market is in bad shape." Very. And then he says that he sees more 55-plus developments in our region, and he stated that he's 71 and him and the wife look at each other and say, "Isn't it time to downsize and get rid of stairs?" And I'm fortunate that my home is laid out where the master's on the, on the bottom, the shower has a small lip, so I don't have that, but it's too, too big for me. So it's going to be interesting to see if, if he pushes that kind of product. Also attended one on deferred maintenance, and the reason I did is because I don't know how old City Hall is or what, or our limited amount of assets that we have left, what condition they're in, but it strikes me that we don't have a capital improvement program for, for these kinds of things. And they brought up that every issue of deferred maintenance doubles the cost down the road. And the gentleman, there was a firm, because I looked it up while I was in there, and they're based in London, they have a Long Beach office, and they go around and do these... And they go around and do these audits. And he says for small air cities, you can just use an Excel dashboard, but it's important to have a baseline of where you're at, to think about that. And, you know, just annoying to me for the last sixteen years, I go to the women's restroom here and, and you push that thing and the water just goes all over you. Just, you know, things that you would think would be fixed in sixteen years. And he also brought on that the two thousand eight fiscal crisis brought on a lot of the deferrals. So, and he also mentioned if we're going down that path again, it's going to be a really difficult area. There was also another one that I attended on doing pilot projects and to test concepts before you commit a lot of large fiscal resources. I imagine this is probably better for, for bigger cities, but I was intrigued by the thought because they were able to get some vendors that were willing to go in on them on these pilot projects to test concepts before committing the large fiscal resources. So that struck me as that, that could be very interesting if you were coming up with something that would be a model for application in a bunch of cities. The most important thing that's been dear to my heart again for the last sixteen years and part of my running for city council was youth and how do we, we treat youth in this community with city resources. There was a councilman from Sacramento who is also, his term is ending, he's not running again, but he talked about in Sacramento how they have gotten youth involved in the city. They have a summer City Hall youth. He says that they also looked at CARES Act funding to, to help. There was a lot of issues during these years for youth that, the increased isolation, and I'm going to say increased isolation because I think living the suburban life is also a kind of isolation, and to improve the mental health of youth. So I'm really interested in, in that issue. And I think we might even have a task force that, that might be. But anyways, I'll be bringing, asking some things to be put on the agenda in relation to this. And, and just in ending, I was very inspired by the pastor that was here. You know, I could really feel my Holy Spirit move and, and the prayer for us. And the thing that I want to share here is, a lot of people think, well, you know, you have baseball, football, cheerleading or whatever, or kids go to high school and they, they have two dances a year and that's enough. And I just always like to say, I was fortunate that I was raised very poor because my mom was a widow. And, but the church, we had Catholic youth organization and they always provided dances. And they also provided trips to the beach. Then there was, of course, the schools that would do some things. But then there was also at that time, you know, it was a war on poverty and you had neighborhood centers for us to go and have youth activities. So, you know, I just say to the people that say that, well, you know, they have prom or whatever, okay, that's once a year. Not everybody's going to play any sports. I, I certainly didn't. But I just think that the city has an obligation to, to contribute to some, some stuff for the youth. That's why I don't want to see all the, all the money go into dealing with our pension crisis. And, oh, and then finally, I turned seventy this year, so I decided to go gray. So my pronouns are still she and her. And it will be growing up. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Robles. Mayor Protem, Bill Hesse.
Thank you, Mayor. League of City too, and all my fellow council members, they discussed this, I'll just discuss a little bit my terms. But you know what was, what was great about, you know, we get to sit there and have camaraderie and, and you get to meet all the other, you know, individual council members out there, you know, and pretty much every city is having the same little issues and going through the same thing. It is kind of hard to compare apples to oranges. So when they're talking about big cities and here we have the small cities, so maybe they give like a little small section one time. But it was a unique experience and I know Mr. Wilson just took off, but we celebrated his birthday there too and they did a character picture on him. So hopefully he'll share that one day. I was waiting for him, I'll wait for him to get back to embarrass him. But it was, but I had him walk because I said, "You're going to be eating a lot of food," so we had to burn those calories. And that was the last time I had him walk. So anyway, we had a good time. But Councilmember Wilson was saying, oh, before I get into that, I want to thank the football team, the boosters, the cheerleaders, the band members, all the high school because they honored those veterans last Friday night. And I got my shirt up there. I didn't know the video was, I don't know if it's working now, but they gave all the veterans a T-shirt and they had us walk the gauntlet and, you know, it was just a great time. It rained during the game, so it was a Friday night rainstorm, but we needed the rain. And it's just a great event and, you know, I appreciate them honoring the veterans and the families and the veterans who are no longer here, you know, their families were able to walk and, you know, honor their loved ones. But, you know, they, I was talking to a parent and they go, "Well, what do you think's going to win?" I go, "Well, GT thirty-six, you know, Patriots twenty-one." Well, the score was thirty-five, twenty-one. So I was close, you know, just off by one point. So I wish I was a gambling man, I'm not, but I would have missed it by one point. But anyways, supporting local and small businesses, what Mr. Wilson's saying, they did emphasize, you know, to try to have, I don't know, cities be like, you know, go between and, and council members go around trying to raise money for the businesses. The only thing I told him on that, I go, "The best way to raise money for businesses is to shop at your business." So that's, you know, I don't think, you know, I don't want to go in there and tell them, "Hey, put money into a business," and then next thing you know, the business folds and they come after me for the money. So it's shop local. But I told them the biggest problem that they're having, and I attended the chamber thing today too, was you go to these restaurants, you don't know if they're open or closed, when they're going to be open and closed, is staffing. Even staffing at our local manufacturer, Weldon Palm CSI, they're having issues hiring people and keeping people. So this is a unique recession. I had never seen a recession where we had, you know, people not getting jobs and there's jobs out there. So, but that was the biggest issue on that. So not having a staffing and, and finding people and then these small businesses trying to compete because our governor just went ahead for the fast food to raise it at twenty-two dollars an hour. So what's going to happen is going to come back on the consumer and I see it's going to be more of a hinder for these small independent businesses. And then, like Councilmember Robles, you know, we went to create a youth friendly city. And I know she's mentioned this before when being on here, is bringing in a, a youth government. I think Councilmember Allen brought it in too, to have them come here and kind of shadow and see what's going on. And I know the COVID thing interrupted everything, but you know, at the football game, it was really neat seeing that, you know, the youth get to enjoy themselves. You know, I know some of the youth, you know, in the last two years, they didn't get to do that. So bringing the youth people back and have them do small government, because I know a lot of them have student bodies when they have their own government and stuff and, you know, having them kind of shadow with us and, you know, see how it's ran and stuff. That's if we have the staff and the man hours to do that, but it'd be neat because we need a, we need new youth input because it goes all the way to twenty-five years. And there is one young lady there, I think she was twenty-four, Sylvia, that she was a council member and she was being mentored by one of the things in the same program. She, she loved it so much, she ended up getting elected as a council member. So that'd be nice to see. And then the biggest one is fixing Prop forty-seven. That's probably a fill in there. And that was, that was a lot of talking and I got up there and spoke on that. And my comments were, you know, because one of the reasons, now since they all smash and grabs up north, they really opened their eyes up north when they called it the Jedi Squad. And they have four youth coming out of a Jedi, uh, Jedi, U-turner Jedi, Jeddah. And they're coming out and they're smashing the grab at the, you know, all the places. Then they go to the warehouses and they sell the merchandise. So you think about this lost youth here and what the pastor talked about. And it is, it's true, you know, I, I too didn't have a greatest upbringing and stuff. And I actually was the fire department, that's why I used to get my Christmas gifts every year. So you think, and I thank God that God came into my life and able to do that. But we have the pastor here and how many youth that he took care of. And that was my biggest comment was, there's a lot of broken families and there's no family values. And fixing Prop forty-seven would be starting with the church and God and getting those programs going for these youth. But also my other comment was stop voting the same people in to come up with these. And then the community capital, what Mr. Allen was talking about. I know the sheriffs used to do that, you know, because if, I know the community was talking about Law Enforcement Night Out, Nights Out or something, and we didn't have it this year or the last couple of years. And I know it was a big success at Stater Brothers, but it brought the community together to see you guys more in this, you know, law enforcement. And that's what this whole program is about, to have the community, you know, one-on-one with coaching, you know, doing your mentoring and stuff and, and that. So that was basically what that was. And that's a really good program and they get to see, you know, the, the human side of the sheriffs and you guys get to see the human side of the individuals. And I know my son does that in Riverside, you know, get to know each other and build a rapport and that helps. And the last thing I went to was harassment prevention training. It's like going to driver's ed class, but you know, stayed there for two hours, but that was pretty good. And the dinners were good, camaraderie was great, you know, thank you Conrad for showing us around and stuff. But, you know, once again, thank you to the GT Titans and the Booster Club for honoring those vets. That's a great thing that you did for us and I really appreciate it. And thank you for the shirt. That's all I have, Mayor. God bless.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Protem. OmniTrans board meeting for me on September seventh. There are a couple of things that are specific to our city that I thought were very interesting. The twenty-twenty Regional Mobility Partnerships Call for Project had six applicants. One of those was Grand Terrace and it was an Uber subsidy program. Uber meaning the ride program. And so the board authorized OmniTrans to initiate the subsidy program in November of twenty-twenty. There was an RFP issued, negotiated and awarded to Uber for the subsidy program and it became an Uber ride program. And so starting in February of this year, the pilot launched with initial application, applicant partners, and they promoted through these partners. And then during the pilot, the Lyft ride program ended and there was a soft launch to impacted Lyft ride customers. Now, what that all means is they're going to go forward with, with the actual program. The eligibility will be seniors and individuals with disability. There'll be a fifty percent subsidy per trip in Uber, a fifteen dollar maximum subsidy per trip, a maximum of fifteen subsidized trips per month. So initially they set a hundred and fifty dollar per month for the maximum, but updated it due to technical considerations. And it is open to residents of the service area and the trips must either start or end within the service area. So that's a nice, that's a nice opportunity that we have for our seniors and, and those with disabilities in our community. The next step is that, well, they, they were looking at the participation steadily increasing. And I believe this is a, a better alternative than what they had with their access program because that seemed to have its problems. And so they will begin implementation of that. So that was the one takeaway, that the ridership on the, the regular bus lines is increasing now that COVID is over and they're starting to have their coach operators back. And as far as SBCTA, they're looking at Measure I funds, they're making sure everything is the way that it's supposed to be. And so I'll just end there and I will say, Mr. City Manager, what are your communications to us?
Just one for me is we had the storm come through and all the, the rain and the broken tree branches. We're still in the process of cleaning that up. It's going to take us another couple of days or so to get the, the biggest, we got the biggest chunks out of the way, but there's still a mess on the street. So if you bear with us, we'll, we're working to clean that up, to get the rest of that mess taken care of. And Lieutenant Lane has a couple of comments for us as well.
Evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Two things, or maybe three. National Night Out was a huge success. We did that in Loma this year. It was supposed to be in the county, but we couldn't line up the, the location and, and the sort of sponsorship that we kind of look forward to have it at the right place. So we, we moved it to Loma, we had some people out there that reached out to us. However, the commitment that I've made to the city manager is that we have it here in GT next year. So that's my guarantee in, when is that, in August? We'll definitely have that here somewhere in GT. So you can look forward to that. Next week, next Tuesday, as a matter of fact, at nine o'clock, we have Coffee with the Cop here at Woody's again. So I've put that up on our social media. We hope to see as many folks there as possible. It's also a great opportunity for folks to come out and meet a bunch of deputy sheriffs and, and a lot of our staff. In fact, I think we outnumbered most of the other visitors that came the last one. We had so many of my folks there. But they enjoy coming out and meeting everybody and hearing their stories and, and getting questions and, and talking back and forth. So we're all looking forward to that, hope to see as many people out there as possible. Hopefully they, they open up that side room for us. I think we're going to need that this time. And the last is really just a sort of a public service announcement. The donkeys are, are a huge component of, of this community as much as they are in Colton and also in Loma Linda. And I, I keep seeing on the websites all the time that we have donkeys that get hit by cars in Ritchie Canyon and elsewhere along Barton. And it's a shame because I think a lot of that stuff could be avoided with, with people just driving a little bit more carefully. Today we had, we actually had to dispatch and put down a donkey that it had been hit by a car and, and the driver left the scene and left the donkey there with a couple of broken legs. So I really hate to see that, just as a person, as a human, and, and it's hard for us to do. So I would appreciate people just sort of driving with some due regard, especially in these areas where they know the donkeys are, whether they're coming in town or, or going out of town or just passing through. Just, just pay attention to the cars in front of you. Be patient. They may be driving slow because, you know, there's, there's donkeys in the road. And when you're trying to zoom around them, that, that could end up being you and it could be very, very damaging and costly. So that, that would be my plea is that people just take it easy and drive careful out there. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Lieutenant Lane.
Do that one more, sorry. We are taking nominations. We, remember earlier in the year, we talked about the landscape recognition. So we are taking nominations for the yards in the city. If anybody would like to recommend themselves, their neighbors, their friends, or just any place they drive by that is, is a well-manicured, well-taken-care-of or just creatively done yard, please send me an email with pictures or the address and we will be putting that together for later in the year for this, the biannual awards. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. So we will, at this time recess to closed session. We have one closed session item, which is conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five six point nine B, number of cases won. So if you are not here when we return, our next regular city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, September twenty-seventh at six P.M. And any request to have an item placed on future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the city clerk's office and the requests will be processed in accordance with council procedures. So at this time, we are in recess. All right. We'll reconvene to open session. Council met and closed session with one item, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation. We have no reportable actions coming out of that closed session. We did give direction to staff. So we will adjourn our regular meeting to the next regular city council meeting that will be held on Tuesday, September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two at six P.M. Any request to have an item placed on a future agenda must be made in writing and submitted to the city clerk's office and the requests will be processed in accordance with council procedures. We are adjourned.